Well, this is what we've been trying.
Day of the 7th, uh, 2017. Terry, would you call roll please?
Staff Mayor Young.
Here.
Councilman Ring.
Here.
Councilwoman Fireman.
Here.
Mayor Keyes.
Here.
Councilman Powers.
Here.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Your interest in city government is much appreciated. Uh, there are a number of opportunities to speak on matters of city business this evening. A sheet explaining those opportunities has been made available at the front upon entering the meeting room. Uh, as we, as we move forward in tonight's agenda, I will note, uh, when public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign up sheet for public comment has been provided, uh, to you as you enter the council chambers for those individuals designed to speak, uh, and address city council during the appearance of citizens section. Uh, so tonight, we have, uh, several special guests with us. Uh, we'll have Hayden Armstrong, who will be leading us in our invocation, and we will have all of troop three, uh, from First Presbyterian Church that will lead us in the, in the pledge.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, Hymny Father, thank you for this day. Please guide us and help us to always be kind to other people, Lord. Please forgive us for our main mistakes, Lord, and give us the strength to do better next time. Please bless our parents and teachers and leaders, Lord. Please help us to do the right thing. Help us to be more of your image. And your sons may pray. Amen.
Councilor.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayors, give me a moment to, to recognize, I really do appreciate the effort that the Boy Scouts, uh, put into it. Boys, it's, it's what you put into it and what your leaders and what your families do that, um, give you such a great opportunity. And, um, I appreciate the parents who are here tonight and, um, some of the parents who have been through even with, uh, Mr. Herb, uh, Ben Nostrom, who's been there for many, many years and, um, just the service that he has made to, um, each of you. And, uh, it's, it's, it's always a pleasure to be able to see how you can add value to your community and also how you can add value to each other. So, thank you and keep up the good work.
Thank you guys for being here. Mr. Shore, do we have any items to be added to the agenda?
No, Mayor, the agenda is complete.
We do have two proclamations, uh, on the agenda this evening. We have one proclamation, uh, on the, on the agenda, uh, designating the month of March 2017 as Professional Buyers Day in Bristol, Tennessee. I'd like to ask Jack Young to read the proclamation. Ms. Crystal Keye, purchasing agent from the city, is in attendance to accept the proclamation.
Whereas the public procurement profession plays a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of both government and business, and whereas in addition to the purchase of goods and services, procurement adds value to organizations by performing such functions as executing, implementing, and administering contracts, developing strategic procurement strategies, and cultivating working relationships with suppliers and other departments within the organization. And whereas, public procurement professionals in the city of Bristol and in other public and private organizations have a tremendous influence on the economic conditions in the United States with accumulative purchasing power running into the billions of dollars. And whereas, the Department of Administration's Purchasing Division through its members is committed to providing high caliber, strategic, logistical, and operational support of all departments within the city of Bristol. And whereas, the Purchasing Division recognizes, supports, and practices the public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service, and transparency established by NIGP, the Institute for Public Procurement, as fundamental tenants of the public procurement profession. And whereas, NIGP has proclaimed the month of March as procurement month to further expand the awareness of the purchasing professional's role to government officials, the general public, business, and corporate leaders. Now I ther- now therefore, I Chad Keen, Mayor of the City of Bristol, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim March 2017 as procurement month and March 8th, 2017, as Professional Buyers Day in the city of Bristol, and urge all citizens in recognizing the role of the purchasing and materials management profession within business, industry, and government this 7th day of March 2017.
Okay, next we have a proclamation designating the month of April 2017 as National Autism Awareness Month. I'd like to ask Margaret Fire Robin to read the proclamation as Peg Staten. Uh, Ms. Peg Staten is in attendance this evening to accept the proclamation.
Whereas autism is a pervasive development disorder affecting the social, communication, and behavioral skills of those affected by it. And whereas, as more health professionals become proficient in diagnosing autism, more children are being diagnosed on the autism spectrum, resulting in rates as high as one in 68 children nationally. And whereas there is no cure for autism, it is well documented that if individuals with autism receive early inter- in, early and intensive treatment throughout their lives, they lead significantly improved lives. And whereas individuals with autism often require a lifetime of specialized and community support services to ensure their health and safety, and to support families' resilience as they manage the psychological and financial burdens autism can present. Whereas, the city council is supporting autism awareness efforts to educate parents, professionals, and the general public about autism and its effects. And now therefore Chad Keen, Mayor of Bristol, Tennessee, does proclaim the month of April as National Autism Awareness Month in Bristol, Tennessee, and urges all employees and residents to become better educated about autism and create a better community for individuals with autism this 7th day of March 2017.
Thank you, and Emily Rose, thank you. And, um, people with autism and autism spectrum disorder everywhere, thank you, especially those who are unable to speak for themselves. Um, I'd like to read the autism prayer. It's taken from the Serenity Prayer and it goes like this. "God grant me the serenity to accept the world that doesn't understand autism, the courage to take my child out in public anyway, and the wisdom to know when it's time to go home." Thank you.
Thank you. So, I believe we have Matt Hill that's just now gained here in the parking lot, but I think what we can do is go ahead and go to Mr. Brian Rose, uh, under our presentations for tonight's agenda and let Brian, uh, speak to us. Uh, Brian is the City Director of Community Development. Mr. Lee Hoffman of Middlebrook Comer's Association, uh, are with us, uh, to present the results of the city's first neighborhood grant program. Gentlemen, if you'll have, if you'll take it over from the floor here.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So, one of the city's goals, uh, over this past fiscal year was to create a competitive neighborhood grant program, which would assist neighborhoods with projects providing a public benefit to their neighborhood. This program was considered by city staff and city council. Um, it was presented to the council on March 22nd of 2016. Uh, the program was made public in April, and then applications were requested and were due by May 31st of 2016. These applications were submitted for, uh, a $5,000 grant for projects that could improve a neighborhood in, um, some manner that the neighborhood would decide and they would put forth to the city as, as an application, uh, to receive that, that funding. So, uh, we are planning on, as a city, doing this as a recurring grant program. So, uh, this project actually was the kickoff of this program and it's gone very well, we think. Uh, we hope to, uh, see great things from this program in the following years. But again, it's, it's for a $5,000 grant and for its any neighborhood, it's for any neighborhood that, uh, could pull together, um, and come up with a project that they feel would benefit them in, in some manner. So, uh, again, I went, I went through some of the history on it. We did, um, have a grant awarded in, on July 5th to the Middlebrook commit, uh, community, and, um, that project has now been completed and so we're, we're here to present that to you tonight. So, this is the location of the Middlebrook entrance and that's the, uh, location of the project. Uh, they have just a triangle island there where there's some landscaping and their sign. Uh, the project was to redo some lighting and add some new lighting in that area for safety purposes. Um, and so basically they proposed to add, uh, four floodlights against the, the neighborhood sign, that, the identification sign, and then also some lights along the frontage wall, along the, the street there. And then two three light postlights, which are decorative in nature, and you'll see the picture, and this is the second, that, uh, would go basically where the, the, the blue dots are, and they're a little off. I think maybe the, the PowerPoint got messed up between, between, uh, programs. But anyway, they're not in the middle of the street. Um, but, uh, these are, these are basically the, uh, new lights that have been installed there. They're decorative lights, they're very nice looking. Uh, I've heard great comments so far from the neighborhood that, uh, they're very happy that they've been installed and they, they do look good as you're driving by. Um, you can also see the, the lighting up against the, uh, the Middlebrook sign up in the top left. And also, if you look close along the wall, there are some lights that protrude from the wall that shine downward and just, uh, help to illuminate that wall for visibility and safety purposes. Um, that's been an issue for visibility and, and hoping to avoid some, uh, potential traffic incidents in, in that area. So, these are some night pictures, just to kind of give you an idea of how it looks at night. It's very, very well lit now. Um, you can see the, the, the pole light with the sign in the background. Here's the wall with it, with the sign and the pole. And then of, just a shot of the, of the wall. Um, and again, we, uh, we're, we were very excited to, to start this project, to do this project with the neighborhoods. We hope that it's, uh, created some great visibility for, um, not only the neighborhood and the, and the intersection, but also for the city as a whole. We want to show that the city neighborhoods, that we want to help them to, uh, improve the values of their neighborhoods. And, uh, hopefully this will, uh, be a great start to this program in the future. And I, I certainly, um, am very proud that, uh, we've been able to accomplish this for the, for the Middlebrook neighborhood. Um, we do have Lee, Lee Hoffnung here from the neighborhood, and, uh, I think he wanted to say a few words, and so I'm going to turn the time over to him. So, thank you.
First of all, on behalf of the community, I'd like to say thank you to the council for, for believing in the program. And I'd like to say thank you to Brian and Sheriff here. Uh, we worked hand in hand through the entire process. And I'd like to speak as a voice for the neighborhood. Uh, I didn't write anything, I don't want to take a lot of time, but I did feel that council should hear what some of the neighbors are saying. And, um, the first one is, I'm so glad, I always have trouble seeing the entrance at night. But most of all, the whole appearance is very attractive inviting. A great job to all who were involved, and that includes you, the council. Um, the last statement I'd like to read, I think sums it up. It says, "New lights." It says, "Thank you to all involved. The lights at the entrance look wonderful." And, uh, speaking for myself, coming home from Knoxville the other night, I was sure glad to see the entrance to the community. It, uh, it was very welcoming, and, uh, I think the other neighborhoods should definitely take an opportunity of this grant. I wish whoever replies, good luck. Thank you.
Lee, you've always been an adequate advocate for, uh, Middlebrook, and, uh, all of your hard work and volunteerism there really shows. So, thank you so much for, for what you've done for that, for our community. Uh, next we have, uh, Mr. Matt Hill from Malden and Jenkins Certified Public Accountants, uh, here to present Independent Auditor's Report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, uh, 2016. Matt?
Thank you very much. Appreciate y'all allowing me to be here this evening and talk a little bit about the fiscal year 2016 audit. Um, you know, kind of the, what we've got in front of us is just a little presentation, uh, that we're just going to kind of go through, just kind of talk about the audit itself a little bit, um, let you know some of the things about the firm and everything. Uh, but we'll go ahead and, and kind of flip through this. Um, you know, just kind of the first page, talking a little bit about what this whole presentation is about. Um, just talk a little bit about the engagement, like I said, um, and overview of the audit. We're going to go through some things that are just required communication type things, um, as we go through this. Uh, flipping over to the next page, um, this is just some general information about the firm itself. Um, we do more governmental audits than any firm in the southeast. Um, we've been doing them for a lot of years and we're very proud of our governmental practice, uh, and certainly appreciate the opportunity to serve the city. Um, if we flip over to the next page, this is just some additional information about Malden Jenkins, who we are, who we serve, that type of thing, um, services provided. Um, we'll flip over to the next page, we're going to talk a little bit now, getting into sort of the audit itself. Um, as we look at here, uh, management's responsibility for the financial statements, um, this is an important part. Um, you know, we don't make these financial statements, these are management's assertions. Our job is to come in and give an opinion on them. So, you know, the, the big, you know, bound, uh, Conference of Annual Financial Report, um, that's really your management's responsibility. Um, they're the ones that kind of put it together and we just kind of come behind, test it, and then basically give our opinion on it. Um, and that's kind of what our auditor's responsibility, that next part talks about. Our opinion, um, this is the most important part. Um, this is what we actually are, where we're coming in and saying, um, whether or not we agree with the financial statements. And we're issuing a, we issued a clean opinion. Um, it's called unmodified now, uh, but that essentially means that we didn't have any material misstatements. Um, and that's the most important thing as far as the opinion goes, is that we don't have any modifications or anything to it. Um, talking about going through some of the other matters, nothing really there that we need to sort of go through. If we want to flip over to the next page, um, just kind of looking at the financial statements themselves, um, it's sort of broken up into three sections. Uh, we're not going to get too involved into that. Um, talks a little bit about our government wide financial statements, then we've got our fund level financial statements. It's really just kind of how we aggregate. Um, there's a little bit different basis of accounting for those, um, but nothing that essentially is really in depth that we sort of need to look at. Um, talking about the government wide financial statements, it's kind of split up. We've got our statement of net position, um, on our statement of activities, which are sort of like your balance sheet in your income statement, if we're looking at a non-governmental entity. Um, this is sort of where we look at what your out assets are, what your liabilities are, and then what you've got essentially in equity or net position that we call at the government wide level. Um, you know, we go through and kind of talk a little bit about how the, your statement of activities change, what happened with your net position. Um, your governmental activities, we've got your governmental and business activity, you'll notice, um, they're at the bottom. We know increased by 118 million, uh, to 127 million. Um, your business type activities also increased. Um, so you know, you know, that, that's kind of an indication that you had what we would say, you know, a better, a productive year, um, as far as, at the government wide level. Um, sometimes that doesn't exactly mirror what we look at at the fund financial statements, which we'll get into in a second. Um, but that's certainly, both of those are, uh, healthy net positions. Um, the thing to keep in mind is a lot of that is sort of held up in your property, plant, and equipment. Um, a lot of that net position, I mean, it doesn't equate to cash. Um, so when you're looking at that statement, uh, you want to kind of keep in mind, we even kind of have an op- on item there of what amount of that actually represents the capital that you have on the land and buildings and everything else. So, don't want to get too, uh, excited when we talk about net position, thinking that that's what we have available to spend. I'm sure y'all are well aware, it's the budget process, that that is certainly not the case. Um, if we want to slip over to the next page, um, talk a little bit about the general fund, um, kind of your, you, what we want to look at there in the general fund is that net change in fund balance. Um, you exceeded expenditures, your revenues exceeded expenditures by about six and a half million dollars. Um, you know, and, and kind of, that's always, uh, you know, with governments, um, sometimes revenues and expenditures can get a little cloudy, you know, when you issue debt, that's actually your revenue and that sort of thing. Um, but on your general fund side, that is a good increase for the year, just kind of looking at your, the amount that you increase versus your general fund balance as a whole. Um, certainly I think that was a good year as far as the way that resources were managed and that sort of thing. Um, talk a little bit more about some of the other governmental funds. Uh, then we get down to the bottom and we talk about the business, uh, the business type statement of net position. Again, this is like your, uh, where we've got our balance sheet. Um, this, we actually have, uh, separate, in a separate part of the statements in addition to where we have it in the front. There's not a whole lot there that I really want to go through. We've kind of talked about how your net position increased at the government wide level. It's a similar thing that happens at the fund level because of the basis of accounting about the same. Um, going through, then flipping over to the next page, uh, we also issue a compliance report, um, for required, when you have a certain amount of federal dollars to issue an opinion over your, uh, federal spending. Um, and again, that's a separate opinion from a financial statement opinion. Again, we have an unmodified opinion. Um, so we've got a clean opinion on financial statements and a clean opinion on your, essentially over your yellow book, your, uh, laws and regulations, as well as your over your yellow book, your laws and regulations, as well as your federal grants. Audit scopes and procedures, there's nothing there that I really want to talk about. We'll flip over to the next page. Looking at page nine, some of the required communications, I'm not going to read all this verbatim, but just kind of, you know, that this is some of the stuff, if you want to know what management's responsible for, if they're varying accounting policies that maybe you don't understand or something. But they're following everything that they're required to when they have choices, that sort of thing. Also, another important thing is the management judgments and accounting estimates. One thing I like to point out is, you know, there are things that have to be reviewed every year when we're talking about looking at estimates and things that management has to go through and actually decide, is this essentially booked correctly? There are judgments involved. These aren't just straight, you know, everybody can redo the number type things, but there aren't anything peculiar about the judgments or estimates that we see. Going over to the next page, this kind of just goes through some of the disclosures and that sort of thing, some of the things that were required to communicate. We didn't have any disagreements with management. We're not aware that they used any other accountants for consultation or anything in regards to financial statements. No real significant issues that came up during the audit, which we would need to disclose to y'all. Going through to the next page, talk a little bit about uncorrected misstatements and independence. One of the things that I want to point out is that, one of the things that you don't see in here is any audit findings. We have a finding when we go through and see that there's some sort of problem with your internal controls, or that there's some sort of violation or that sort of thing. Y'all had no findings, audit findings of any kind. Also, we also will make management recommendations from year to year, say, hey, this is a rise to the level of a finding, but this is something that you might want to keep in mind. Again, this year, we didn't have any management recommendations. It's the first year that I think that we've done the audit where we didn't have anything to be reported. So, that's about as clean an audit as you're going to get. So, certainly that's the, because of your management and the hard work that they put into it. After that, we kind of go through, there's just some of the new Gatsby pronouncements and some of the ones that were implemented. I'm not going to go through all of those. I just kind of want to talk a little bit about one that's going to be affecting the city this next coming year. It's a Gatsby 77 regarding tax abatements. And essentially, what that's going to require is that the, each governmental entity is going to have to essentially start basically listing out in the financial statements in some sort of aggregate, and not all the case having to list every business or everything else, but if there is a tax break, some sort of tax break that's given to a business, in some cases, it could be an individual, that's very rare that I've seen, we're going to have to start basically disclosing that. And the questions that I've been getting a lot are, how is this going to make people look at this when we're disclosing these are the things that we're doing for these businesses? Because you don't get to kind of show the flip side of, well, this is the goodwill that we're generating, this is the amount of new business that's coming in. You know, some of that may be cleared up as far as in the MDNA, but it's something where a lot of folks have concerns, where it just looks like a black eye, where you're saying, here's what we're giving folks. And just kind of want to make you aware of that, that that is something that's being discussed in the accounting community. But at this point, we don't know that it's going to change a whole lot, but just want to give you a heads up now because there's no telling, you know, how it's going to look once we get everything sorted out, because there's a lot of legwork involved in trying to identify all of these programs. That being said, that's kind of everything in the presentation that I wanted to cover. I'll answer any questions about the audit or anything y'all might have.
I would just say congratulations to our financial department and to Tara on a great job. I remember sitting here last year, and there was just one or two little things that were just so minor, almost negligible to comment on, but it's great to have an absolutely A to Z clean audit. So, congratulations. Thank you for your help, and congratulations, Tara. Good job.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Hill? Sheriff, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
And drive carefully.
We have no public hearings on the agenda tonight, so let's move on to the appearance of citizens. This section provides an opportunity for the public to address city council on matters that are not on the printed agenda for formal consideration. Comments are limited to matters of city business only. A response will not likely be made at this time, since most cases neither the council nor the city manager will be prepared to effectively respond to the concern. The city manager will take a look into the matter and report back to the city council, or as appropriate, have staff meet with you in an effort to satisfy your concerns. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual. Groups are encouraged to select a spokesperson to represent them. I have been provided a list of individuals desiring to address city council this evening. And I think we have already heard from Lee Hoffman. So, thank you again, Lee. And now, we have John Weaver.
Hi, I'm John Weaver, 918 Tremont Avenue. And I have two things tonight. Number one, I would like to thank the city council for doing a great job. When I look across the street at our other side of the town, then I'm just proud that we're not had the problems that they had. The second thing is I turned in a page to put in each one of these mailboxes, and it's concerning the use of jake brakes or exhaust braking on the large trucks within our city. I put on our request that the city council will consider and pass an ordinance as follows. The use of exhaust braking or jake braking is prohibited within the city limits of Bristol, Tennessee. Exhaust braking is designed to assist large trucks in braking on long inclines or coming down from speed. It is not necessary within the slower speeds of the city. And it's very noisy, and it's used at all times of the day and the night. And I think this would give a lot of people a little more peace and quiet. I live approximately off of Weaver Pike, the lower end down there, and speed limit's 25 mile an hour. And I hear trucks come up, and when they pass College Avenue, they put on the jake brakes, and they do them all the way down to Edgemont. And to me, I mean, if you're doing 25 mile an hour, your brakes should be adequate. You shouldn't have to use that. It's mainly used for like long inclines on interstates and mountainous roads and stuff to help cool the brakes. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Next, we have Eddie Mulberry.
Mayberry.
Mayberry, excuse me.
Mayor, council members, we come on this afternoon to petition the council on behalf of the residents of the Sunnybrook subdivision. Word is out that they are looking to relocate a business known as Intimate Treasures at the corner of Sunnybrook and the Volunteer Parkway. Word has been floating around that there's not much of anything that you can do about that. It's going to devalue every home that is located in that subdivision. We have approximately 130, 150, maybe more homes. I have a list of 184 people that has signed and has given us addresses that lives in that area with children, and they are very much concerned about that. I like to believe that if they was going to relocate such a business in any one of your neighborhoods, that you would really come together and do something about that. So, it is our desire that the council will look into this matter, and that you would give us at least a date or time that we can meet, whether publicly like so. Do you want us to bring all the people we can get? We can probably flood the auditorium with individuals, but we want to try and nip it in the bud, the old saying is, before it get off the ground. If there's anything at all that can be done, we are expecting and we are hoping that you're going to do what you can to help us to curtail this. I do have some other people that are from the Sunnybrook subdivision that's here tonight. And as a matter of fact, I didn't speak to something because one of them going to come in back of me, that's going to read the little petition that we have, this not in petition form, that we want to try and leave with the council, that you can have and see what our priorities are concerning this business that's known as Intimate Treasure. I like to lift this up also and say, a lot of time, people look at the business side of things, and they forget about the value of the people's side of things. A lot of people has been living there. I've been in the area 32 years myself, and some that was there prior to my coming, some that has recently moved into the area. People purchasing property that the value is going to drop on, the immoral standards that is going to present for the children that are going to school, coming from school, and things of this nature. We want you to take those things in consideration. We thank you, and we yield any time to the forum that's coming back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayberry. Next, we have Quentin Reynolds.
We're speaking on the same subject, so that's acceptable. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, all my neighbors, and especially the Boy Scouts. I know it's hard to believe, I actually used to be a Boy Scout. Don't let that scare you, stick with me. My wife and I moved into Sunnybrook, it'll be 14 years this coming Labor Day, and we loved the neighborhood. We've raised our children there. The neighbor lady that lived beside Ms. Hughes, her husband and her built the home and raised their family there. And she said it was a planned neighborhood at the time, and it was meant to be a good wholesome neighborhood where children could run in the streets, and they still do. It's still a good neighborhood. And I'm concerned, like my neighbors, that this type of business is inappropriate. I know it's lawful. I understand that. I understand that this man has a right. I'm not trying to impugn him, his business, or his customers. But there's a difference between lawful and appropriate. There are many empty storefronts on that end of the Volunteer Parkway that would be much more appropriate for this type of business, but to have it sitting on the very corner of the entrance to Sunnybrook subdivision, which was a cornerstone subdivision, is my understanding at the time it was built, as Bristol expanded in that direction. Every home there has a story about a family. The folks that lived behind me, he was a WWII veteran. On his last night here, before he shipped off to war, they had, in Charleston, South Carolina, they had, the USO had a dance, and he met a little 16-year-old girl there. Well, he didn't have a family, so he asked her if it was okay if he wrote her. He said, "You don't have to write me back." But she did. And his first order of business when he got back was to carry his duffel to her house and ask her father for her handed marriage. And they were still married all these years later. They raised their family there on El Paso. Every home in that neighborhood has a similar story. We're now three generations, in some cases, four generations deep with children out on the streets. Any given day, the children will be out there riding their bikes, playing basketball, whatever. Folks are walking their dogs. Sometimes their dogs are walking them. But at any rate, I just like to express my concern. I don't know if there are any variances in the building code. If there is, perhaps that's a method that we could steer this business to another location to be more appropriate. But that's all I have to say. And I'd like to thank you for your time, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Now, we have Robert Bob Ray.
I'm also from Sunnybrook. Is that all right if I say just a few words?
Sure, yes.
In many respects, I think this has resulted from a misunderstanding. And the misunderstanding, I think, has possibly to do with the fact that this was the old thoroughfare south of Bristol to Bluff City and to Johnson City. Now, back 100 years ago, we didn't really, okay, 100 years ago, we had some kind of cars. So, say 150 years ago, we had horses and buggies and wagons, and people walked, right? So, it wasn't a real matter of putting a lot of people in a lot of place, in a small space at one time, but they were all spread out, and there were farms scattered from South Bristol to Bluff City, right? What we have now is a highway and a street. The Volunteer Parkway is a residential street on the one hand, and it is a highway on the other. And so, when the zoning was done, parts of the Parkway, right next to the, parts of the areas next to the Parkway were zoned commercial. And yet, they're in residential areas, right? So, this creates a real dilemma. I've thought about this for over a month now, and I've been through the north side of Sunnybrook. Only three people said, "Well, if they buy the land, they can do what they want to with it." Now, we all know that that's not really considerate of our fellow citizens, that people can do with the land what they want to do with it, right? But the issue is that we just feel that we have a real misunderstanding about what is commercial and what is residential. And we would plead with that owner and his employees to consider this. And we would also plead with the council. I know many of you have already confronted this to some extent, and you've worked hard on it, and we thank you for your effort, right? But we just thought we would come today and present this and get it off our shoulders, more or less. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Now, we have Roma Phillips.
I also am speaking about the issue with the location of Intimate Treasures. I hope it's okay for me to go ahead and speak. I live at 104 Sunnybrook Drive. My name is Roma Phillips, and my property is immediately adjacent, immediately adjacent to that location. I strictly oppose it, and I'm so thankful that the residents of my neighborhood wholeheartedly agree as well. My son has been corresponding with the city quite a bit, and we've intercepted some emails and whatnot, and we've been trying to see what we can do to stop this. I realize that everyone has First Amendment rights, and truly, you know, Mr. Hatfield is the new owner of that property at 1926 Volunteer Parkway. He has rights as well, based on the First Amendment. But when it comes to the point that it diminishes the value of the other residents' property, and I do consider that business to be highly immoral, I'll say that now and I'll say that tomorrow. So, I think it's a detriment to the neighborhood. It's going to drastically deflate the property values. I do know, to give the city credit, that they did decline him initially, but then they did some consulting with other attorneys and so on, and I think at the state level, and it was determined that it would be something that couldn't be won. I would argue that fact. We know that the definition of an adult-oriented establishment is if their stock or trade comprises 51% or more. And I know the city has focused on the inventory. And I mean, I have some emails here, from Mr. Hatfield's attorney, that basically says, you know, we can make that inventory look like whatever it wants to look like, needs to look like. That's not right. I think that the city needs to focus on the aspect of trade, which would mean, in my opinion, what is actually being sold, if it's 51% or more of what their receipts are. I do know that we can file an application for the zoning appeal board to hear this, and I would just like it to be known that I plan to go first thing in the morning and do that very thing. And if there's anything else that you all can do to help prevent this, I know myself and all the residents in Sunnybrook would more than appreciate that. If you were in our position, I'm sure, you know, you would feel the same way, and you certainly wouldn't want your property values deflated. So, you know, I'm highly opposed to it, and whatever I need to do to try to stop it, I'm going to make every effort to do that. And I just wanted everyone to know that, and I appreciate any help or relief that you all can provide for us. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. That has our sign-in sheet taken care of. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address council on any issue that's not on our printed agenda? I want to let the residents know of Sunnybrook that we hear you, and there's been somewhat of a discussion about this, I know, in several different circles. I was going to suggest that the zoning appeals, go to the zoning appeals. I was going to suggest that the zoning appeals, go to the zoning appeals and see if anything can be done there, but we must carry forward here tonight. This evening, we have appointments to be considered for three boards and one commission. First, we have an appointment to be made to the Health and Education Facilities Board. The appointment will serve a six-year term, ending June 30th, 2022. The candidate is George Leo. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidate? Please mark your ballots and pass them to the city manager, where they can be read aloud.
Let's see, yeah, I do. Yeah, that's right. I did the whole one. Too many pieces of paper.
We have several little tags to do, so.
Councilwoman Runing votes for George Low. Mayor Keen votes for George Low. Councilwoman Farrobin votes for George Low. Vice Mayor Young votes for George Low, and Councilwoman Powers votes for George Low.
Next, we'll consider appointments to fill three positions, yeah, fill three positions on the Bristol Housing Board. The first appointments will be for two at-large positions on the board. The appointments will serve a five-year term, ending March 31st, 2022. The candidates are Todd Dolehandy, Donna Felty, and Michael Moorfield. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidates? Please mark your ballots and pass to the city manager.
Donna has served for quite a while and has done an outstanding job, and she has a great understanding of this particular board, and I wholeheartedly endorse Donna. I know others know Donna very well as well.
I'll speak on behalf, I've had the honor of serving with Donna while she was chair of that organization, and then also, Mr. Michael, known as Scott Moorfield, also has served there as a interim, or an unexpired term, and this would be his first full board appointment. Appreciate his involvement in the other parts that he has been able to add value to our housing authority.
And I'll also just say that Todd Del Huntie is a new appointee to our Community Development Board, and he might make a good member at some point, but I think being new on the other board at this point is a good thing, and look forward to the work he does on that, and if he's interested in another board at some point, including this one, in the future.
Okay. Councilwoman Runing votes for Donna Felty and Michael Moorfield. Councilwoman Farrobin votes for Donna Felty and Michael Moorfield. Mayor Keen votes for Donna Felty and Michael Moorfield. Councilwoman Powers votes for Donna Felty and Michael Moorfield. And Vice Mayor Young votes for Donna Felty and Michael Moorfield.
Next, we will consider an appointment to fill a resident position of the Bristol Housing Board. The appointment will fulfill an unexpired term of office, ending March 31st, 2019. The candidate is Anthony Lawson. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidate? Please mark your ballots and pass to the city manager.
Councilwoman Runing votes for none of the above. Councilwoman Farrobin votes for none of the above. Councilwoman Powers votes for none of the above. Vice Mayor Young votes for none of the above, and Mayor Keen votes for none of the above.
Next, we'll consider an appointment to the Library Board. The appointment will serve a three-year term, ending December 31st, 2019. The candidate is Jonathan Harden. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidate? Please mark your ballots and pass to the city manager.
I'll speak on his behalf. He's an active member of our business community, and I happen to be somewhere where one of our Parks and Rec members was talking about their service on Parks and Rec, and his, he said, "Well, I'd really like to serve on the Library Board," and it was like, awesome, because we'd had a vacancy for a month and a half, I think, so, thrilled that he's interested.
Councilwoman Runing votes for Jonathan Harden. Mayor Keen votes for Jonathan Harden. Councilwoman Powers votes for Jonathan Harden. Vice Mayor Young votes for Jonathan Harden. And Councilwoman Farrobin votes for Jonathan Harden.
Next, we'll consider an appointment to the Park and Recreation Commission. The appointment will fulfill an unexpired term of office, ending June 30th, 2018. The candidate is George Leo. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidate? Please mark your ballots and pass to the city manager.
Councilwoman Runing votes for George Low. Councilwoman Powers votes for George Low. Vice Mayor Young votes for George Low. Mayor Keen votes for George Low, and Councilwoman Farrobin votes for George Low.
Okay, we have no ordinances to be considered on first reading this evening, so let's move on to the second reading of ordinance seventeen-one. Ordinance seventeen-one amends Chapter fourteen of the Code of Ordinances by Adoption of the Standard Amusement Device Code. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize?
Yes, may I be glad to. This topic has been a discussion of a January work session and then first reading in February. Deals with the amendment of Chapter fourteen to add the standard amusement device code. As council may recall, in August of last summer, tragic accident involving a Carnival Ferris wheel seriously injured three children in Green County. A post-accident inspection determined that the cause of the accident was a malfunction in the Ferris wheel, an equipment malfunction. As we began to look at this and the potential Carnival that might locate here, we began to look at our ordinance and found that we do not have the statutory ability to regulate Carnival rides or amusement devices within our community. While the state of Tennessee does provide some oversight through their amusement device unit, which is housed in their Department of Labor, they do an annual inspection of Carnival rides, they do ensure that they have proper insurance, and they do permit them on that basis. However, they do not inspect or require an inspection of a Carnival ride after it's been transported to a new location and becomes operational. So, if we amend Chapter fourteen on second reading, or if you amend Chapter fourteen on second reading, this will give the city staff, then, the statutory ability to require a third-party inspection of these rides, and this includes Carnival rides and other type of amusement devices, such as inflatables, that you might see used throughout the community. To that end, the staff recommendations, staff recommends consideration of adoption of the Southern Building Congress International Inc. Standard Amusement Device Code. This code addresses many aspects of amusement devices, but a specific interest to us is the ability to require this third-party inspection, and it gives the building official the authority to declare a ride unsafe and prohibit its operation. I think with that, I think we're ready for questions for staff. Also, Carl Coolor, our chief building official, is in the audience this evening, and he has some experience administering this type of code in another location, which he's previously employed.
Does any member of council have questions for our staff?
I think, I think Carl, did you have any, do you have any statements?
No, I was just here in case, in case y'all had any questions about it. Bill said that since I had previous experience through Virginia as certified amusement device inspector, that, but he summarized it well.
Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion.
Second.
Any member of council like to discuss ordinance seventeen-one any further?
Just briefly state, I've decided to vote no on this, just because the, for me, the addition of the regulation is more cumbersome than I feel the public safety benefit is in this particular situation, so.
Okay. Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? Having seen none, Tara, let's do the roll call.
Councilwoman Runing?
No.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Keen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Under the category of resolutions for council consideration this evening, we have Resolution seventeen-twenty-five authorizing the distribution of tax-equivalent payments from Bristol-Tennessee Essential Services. Mr. Sora, will you please summarize?
Yes, may I be glad to. Annually, this governing body approves a resolution that accepts and authorizes the distribution of tax-equivalent payments from Bristol-Tennessee Essential Services. This year, the grand total is $2,687,335.33. This includes $2,596,554.75 for electric facilities, $18,222.30 for telecommunications facilities, and $72,558.28 for cable and internet. Each payment is made based on a statutory formula and is the maximum amount permitted by law. These payments are made by a tax-exempt utility, and they serve as compensation for services rendered by the various local governments in which host these various facilities. For the city of Bristol, the city of Bristol will receive a total of $2,070,131.91.
Gotcha. Any member of council have questions for staff?
No questions, but a comment. Aren't we lucky to have BTS as part of our city?
We are very much so, very much so.
We have the most outstanding services at the most affordable rate in our whole Upper East Tennessee region, and it's exciting that it is held within the coffers of Bristol, Tennessee. Exciting, great numbers.
Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion.
Second.
Would any member of council like to discuss further Resolution seventeen-twenty-five? Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? Having seen none, Tara, we're ready for the roll call.
Councilwoman Runing?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Farrobin?
Yes.
Mayor Keen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
This brings us to the consent agenda. Mr. Sora, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor. Item A, minutes of the February seventh, 2016 city council meeting. Item B, minutes of the February twenty-eighth, 2017 city council work session. Item C, Resolution seventeen-twenty-six authorizing additional build costs for the Steel Creek Park Nature Center. Item D, Resolution seventeen-twenty-seven approving a grant agreement with Tennessee Department of Transportation for Transit Capital Assistance. Item E, Resolution seventeen-twenty-eight awarding a bid for the purchase of umbrellas. And Item F, Resolution seventeen-twenty-nine awarding a bid for the purchase of ADA vans.
Okay, is any member of council like to have an item removed from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to move and approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Tara, can we do roll call?
Councilwoman Runing?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Farrobin?
Yes.
Mayor Keen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes, and just to comment, the umbrellas for the downtown center are not the pop-up umbrellas, they are the umbrellas that are used during the farmer's market and other activities downtown, so, I didn't want y'all to think we were spending that much money on pop-up umbrellas.
Okay, now, it's Dr. Lily Hill here for our Board of Education liaison report.
I want to let you know that the facility study follow-up is going really well. In fact, the consultants are here this week, and they are talking to people and taking measurements and really evaluating the infrastructure and the suitability for educational programming, so we look forward to having their report and recommendations, and certainly appreciate all of you for partnering with the Board of Education to make that possible. We also, I want to do a shout-out to the Community Relations Department. They have helped us so much in a number of ways. You may know that our high school principal, Dr. Rouse, is retiring at the end of this year, so that's a big position to fill. And so, they helped us produce a video so that we could really describe Tennessee High School and our city to prospective candidates, and as a result of that, we've got some really good candidates, both internal and external, and we really look forward to speaking to all those folks and selecting the very best person that we can for that important role. They also helped us produce a video, a new little segment for parents in the community called "It's All About Kids," and so, we just aired that show on BTN TV, so they're always so kind to help us, so thank you very much for that. Also, next week is spring break. Once again, we are offering intercession on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of next week, which is a combination of both remediation and enrichment activities for our students. And we are also, once again, offering transportation and lunch, so it's a good opportunity for students and their families, and we're happy to be able to do that, so, and a lot of kids will be out and about playing next week, so just be careful out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lily. City managers report.
Yes, Mayor, another shout-out, I guess, to our Department of Community Relations, and I know they do, they do make you all very proud. I can't imagine a community relations department that does a better job than this group does throughout their organization.
Agreed.
Very, very proud of their work. And as you all are aware, they've been doing an internal and external customer satisfaction survey, and then also today, a hundred and thirty-seven of our employees went through the Powell's Business Excellence Institute of Customer Service Training. We'll have additional training tomorrow, and I've been asked to sit through two sessions. But we are very proud of that, and we're very proud of our employees, and also, the initial round of survey results were what we feel like are very positive. We'll do a second survey in two to three months to gauge, six months? Okay, to gauge the, if there's been a, we've established a baseline now, and this will give us feedback as to improvements as a result of our training session. Remind city council of our March twenty-eighth work session at 5:30 in the municipal annex, and also, I give you a save the date, and we'll confirm this up, of Thursday, April the sixth, and we'll do probably a 5:30-type meeting. Be a joint meeting with our planning commission, and at least I can't firm it up, Director Brian Rose is currently polling his planning commission to check their availability. Joint work session for the purpose of our kickoff for our comprehensive plan that we recently approved with our consultant, so, save that date, and I'll confirm it then, hopefully by the end of the week. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sora. At this time, we have city council comments, and I'm going to see if I can reverse the order today and go first. We have discussed several of our work sessions about the visioning program being community-led. I also, first off, want to say thank you to Beth Reinhardt. Beth, you're here, aren't you? If you could come to the podium a minute, I was just going to say, there's a lot of great information that was in this packet that you gave us, and particularly, I'm going to, I am going to pull out one thing that our community relations is doing right now, which, and Mr. Sora just mentioned, about customer service. And one of the things that was pointed out in here was a local group, a local city that had a customer review team report, and I thought that was just an excellent idea. It was something that city council could look at for performance metrics and things of that nature, and I hope that we have time to discuss that in a future council work session.
Sure.
I'd like to ask that we take a little bit of time to look at that, because I know we've put a lot of work into customer service within the city, and it's turned out, turned out really well, and I appreciate your, the cards, I actually took that card and showed several folks how we're, and I'm looking forward to seeing what our results are, and in particular, how departments are doing positively and sometimes negatively, but how each department is doing, so I hope we can do that. Beth, you were asked, the chamber comrade was asked to bring forward information, a timeline of how the visiting process may work, and I would like to see the process move forward sooner rather than later. And I've been told that there are a few grants that could be a place, and I just wanted to open it up for discussion and see if we can get something resolved so that this can move forward, and I believe that's what the chamber wants to do as well, so.
Would you like to say anything first?
I'd just like to say, appreciate the opportunity to participate in this. I think it's going to be a great addition to the community in terms of the community really being able to embrace what they would like, that both... really being able to embrace what they would like, that both Bristol's, both jointly and also separately, because some issues, I think, that will be addressed may be more pertinent to one side or the other. But I think it's a great opportunity for the community to really embrace this and to dream what they want this community to look like in 20 years. It's been about 20 years since we did one of these full-on, and some of you here today were part of that and are still part of that. So, I think it's a great opportunity to undertake and just glad to be a part of it.
Questions, comments?
Timing, there's always talk about what's the best timing for different things, and I know we have a lot going on, but I think we could look at this being possibly a really good timing with Bristol, Virginia just completing their comprehensive plan. We're working on ours. Hopefully, it, planning and looking to the future is on our people's minds and in the community, and I think this visioning process may look very different than the one 20 years ago, where a different community, also, the whole visioning process has been undertaken by a lot of communities with some different models, et cetera. So, I certainly support it and hope that we do move forward. And I guess I asked, do we need to formally, at our work session, we talked about the mayor's working with the chamber, but the chamber being the community entity to really drive it and start putting together steering committee, et cetera. So, do you need things from us to move forward?
If you want to formalize it, if you call from the work session, Mayor Keen volunteered to serve on the advisory committee, and I think Mayor Bill Hartley on the other side of town has done the same thing. I think there was a concept of a seven-person advisory team. How you fill out the balance of that and how those representatives come forward, I think you all need to resolve that amongst yourself. You know, are these appointments that you make, are these appointments that you yield to the mayor to make? I think that's what Bristol, Virginia has done. I think they're, and correct me if I'm wrong, Beth, has Bristol, Virginia empowered their mayor to make those appointments or?
Correct. Mayor Hartley, at the last council meeting, offered to be the volunteer to serve on the steering committee, but then he asked, he announced in the public meeting at that time if there was anyone that wanted to serve that had an interest to please reach out, and he would pass those names along, so.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone indefinitely.
We don't have a motion on the floor right now, so that's not.
If there'll be a motion made.
If the motion is made.
If the motion is made, I'd like to make a motion to postpone indefinitely.
Okay.
We'll wait till the motion's made.
Right, I think he should wait until that motion has been made before you.
Yeah, we also talked, I talked, this seven might be a little small with two cities. So, I mean, I don't know that that's defined, and if it's community-driven, some of that comes not from us, but as y'all explore what the best process is and options, et cetera. But I think it's important that if we say yes, we want our mayor to serve with Bristol, Virginia's mayor, then I would make that motion for our mayor to.
Motion to postpone indefinitely.
Do we have a second for Lee Powers' motion to postpone indefinitely?
Second.
Okay, so we take a vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we debate first, don't we?
Okay, all right, go ahead.
We have the opportunity to debate, to debate. When all of this first presented itself last August, it was announced prior to our council being fully informed of its intent. In the meantime, and let me first of all say, I am all for this, but I am not for this at this moment. You had mentioned, Margaret, that Bristol, Virginia had completed their comprehensive plan, and I know, I hope, everybody's had an opportunity to look at it, to understand the breadth and depth of work that was involved in this. Their culminating report is 132 pages long. They paid $100,000 to do it, thereabouts. It took about 18 months. It involved tremendous community input, and it was very laborious for their staff. We are currently operating our staff at a tremendous capacity. And I think, you know, we sit here every month and we talk about what an awesome staff we have, but then to expect them to complete not only our comprehensive plan, which our sister city has already had the opportunity to complete without being encumbered with a visioning process, I just don't think that we're doing our citizens justice. Our citizens elected us first and foremost to represent Bristol, Tennessee. Bristol, Tennessee has never had a comprehensive plan of this development. Bristol, Virginia has for many years because by state mandate, they are required every five years to at least revisit their comprehensive plan, if not to completely redevelop. This past year of 2016 has been a year of complete redevelopment for their comprehensive plan. And in going through this, I'm sure everybody's had an opportunity, it's on their website, you'll notice that there are eight defined areas, and it goes so far as to define everything within those areas, including the proposed funding. Funding is a big deal. You know, most of it is done within sweat equity for city staff through grant or through TIF financing. So, it is comprehensive. We've never done it before. We agreed to this last year when we developed our goals and objectives. We have already committed to $102,000. We have already made a commitment of 18 to 24 months of development with a professional entity that we have hired. We have the opportunity in developing our own comprehensive plan, just as our sister has, as I mentioned, unencumbered by any other process. This requires tremendous community involvement. If you go through and look at this, you can see the pictures from the community meetings that they held for community input. The workload for staff is tremendous, tremendous, and we have never done this. I don't know about other members of council, but I have asked some of our staff what their workload is like. They work very hard. Visioning is more, we talk about the visioning process, and I too appreciate the chamber. I think y'all do a fabulous job. I don't know that you, we would want the chamber to take on two projects of this magnitude at one time. I believe that visioning for our city, for Bristol, not Bristol, Tennessee alone, not Bristol, Virginia alone, but for Bristol, would be more greatly enhanced to be afforded the 18 to 24 months that it would take for us to sit at the table with our comprehensive plan. Jack, you've talked a lot about public trust over the past several years. Public trust is making sure that we, as the elected officials of Bristol, Tennessee, do everything to put our community at its greatest advantage in participating in any partnership, whether it's the aerospace partnership, whether it's a partnership with Solvain Networks, whether it's a partnership with our schools, with our sister city, with our county. We have worked so hard to build relationships over the past four months, I mean, four years. So, it would be in our best interest of public trust, not to mention our staff's trust, in us that we are not going to obligate them to take on a scope of work that is so demanding. We have a lot of growth right now, we're very active, we're very involved. We need to move forward with our plan first. It's like flying at 40,000 feet if you're a pilot or a jet fighter. I've never done that. You know, when our children were very small, same situation, you'd sit down and the attendant would say, "Should anything happen, be sure you put your mask on first before you try to help others." We need to put our mask on and get our comprehensive plan done first. We need to be able to enjoy the process, our citizens as well as our staff, in regard to the education that we'll all experience, and in regard to the sense of self-awareness as a community. Our tax dollars, we talked about $102,000. You're talking about almost one and a half cent on the tax rate to fund this. It was a unanimous vote. Last month, we voted 5-0 in support of a comprehensive plan. We are not all in agreement. We've been through work session after work session after work session to try to have some understanding. We've made our commitment. Bristol, Virginia has been afforded their commitment to their citizenry. I'm not saying no, I'm saying absolutely yes, absolutely yes. The Ignite program started in 1999. By 2019, we will have this completed. And then we can all sit at the table, fully aware, fully educated, as to what it is that we can bring to the table to plan together. I think that until we have the comprehensive plan for Bristol, Tennessee in its totality, that to do anything else would be ignoring our commitment to Bristol, Tennessee first and foremost. This is a huge lift. I've emailed all of you a copy of this. If you haven't had a chance to take a look at it, you have your link in your inbox. So, I do feel strongly about this, and I do feel strongly about the visioning with Bristol, Virginia, our sister. Our sister. We are joined together, and we've met with great success, but right now, many of the projects that we have built together are facing financial difficulties. There's funding that's going to potentially be cut, and we don't know where that other funding is going to come from to keep these projects stabilized. So, I'm not saying no by any means. I'm saying, not right now, first things first, horse in front of the cart.
Further comment, questions?
One of the parts that I think is important about the visioning is looking out that 10 to 20 years, and that's why I've been one who's been interested in it. As a person who comes from the manufacturing environment, we would go through and we'd map out, what's our current state and what's our future state? Now, we know what our current state is. We can go out and measure those things, but where do we want that current state? What are those things that we can do? And I think some of that complements very nicely with where that comprehensive plan comes in, and some of those, it does use some of the same resources, but it also is a much more abbreviated process to the comprehensive plan, and that's why I'd like to see this progress forward. But I think based on where we are tonight, I'd actually recommend that we not, that we withdraw the motion and have further discussion, whether it's at work session or another time, so that we can go through this. I want to make sure it's a, that we have a consensus to be able to move forward or not.
I believe that anything of this nature that is so comprehensive for our staff and for our community, that we should have full vetting and that we should have full public opportunity for comment. You know, we have public comment on most everything else, and we haven't had public comment on this. And Beth, I do appreciate the timeline that you put together, but some of that, as was announced tonight, April 6th is our kickoff for our comprehensive plan, and 30 days out was when one of the first marks in moving forward would be. So, we're going to have both of these things going on at basically the same time, and there is concern as to whether or not we will have the best finished product that we could possibly have being pulled in two different directions. And Jack, to your point, and I can appreciate your point and respect your point, but when we're talking about projects or interests that may not be implemented for 10, 15, or 20 years, what is 18 months? You know, quite honestly, 18 months in the scope of 20 years for us to be sure that we have done our due diligence, I don't believe is asking too much. And quite honestly, in the past, when we've gotten ready to take on anything like this, we have asked for an RFP of sorts that gives us the financial amount, even though it may be in the form of a grant. There is more expense than just money. There is personal toll. We have just now gotten back the information from our comp study to be sure that all of our employees are paid appropriately, comparatively speaking, to others in the same position with the same years of experience across Upper East Tennessee and Southwest Virginia. We have not fully reviewed that yet, but we know that our staff is working just as hard as they can be, they never tell us no. So, out of respect for the fact that they are always willing and never tell us no, let's be sure that the amount of work that we ask everyone to do is appropriate. You talk about our community volunteers and the people that would be involved in this. You know, first things first.
Further comment? Beth, would you like to say anything?
I don't know if I can alleviate some of the concerns or not. I just jotted a few notes as I was listening here. In terms of the bulk of the work, my understanding was that the chamber would be that administrative arm, that we would bear the, I guess, the feet-on-the-ground piece of that, and that would be, the biggest part of our contribution to this would be that we would staff this and that we would organize it and host and do all the things in terms of moving the process forward. The, all the research that I've read does indicate that it does suit timeline-wise perfectly with where we are right now. That's not to say I don't understand those challenges, because I think there are some challenges with a small community and not spreading people too thin and making sure that the focus is where it needs to be. I think a really good facilitator could do that, but you'd have to have the right facilitator to make sure that you're not pulling from one. And I agree, you would never want to pull away from something that you've invested in a pretty large sum of money to do, so that would be something that would need to be addressed. The funding, my understanding is that Tap of the Crowder, the city manager in Bristol, Virginia, has had in conversations just the few times that we've met, that there is a USDA grant that would be filed for jointly. I don't know what the amount would be, but I know the sooner you apply for it in the year, the better chances are of getting more money because that pot fills up the first of the year, and then once those monies are depleted, they're depleted. I don't know if that helps any, that's just from.
As far as the statistical data that Bristol, Virginia has now secured through their research and development, we don't have that data in this format. We have some data, we have done some work, but we don't have that data. So, my thought is for us to be able to make our greatest contribution, it would be most advantageous for us to have comparable data about our community, and the only way that this tremendous amount, this comprehensive amount of data could be assimilated is through this plan. If the plan is not of value, if it's not something that we can really use in our development as a municipality, then maybe we need to reconsider the comprehensive plan. But you know, we've waited, the history of this community, to finally step out and have a comprehensive plan. And when we ran four years ago, one of the things that we recognized was that we did not have a comprehensive plan, and with everything that we've got going on right now, Bristol, Tennessee needed this type of comprehensive plan as a baseline so that we could move forward. And we voted on this unanimously. We are not unanimous in voting on anything else right now. And again, I am all for the visioning, you know, I have visioned, I, listen, I dream all night long. I just, you know, never turn it off. And I think it's important to have all of our community partners involved in it, but at the same time, I don't see what 18 months will make in the grand scheme of things.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor.
Wait, I need to ask our parliamentarian. So, Jack mentioned talking about it again, so if we don't agree with the motion but do want to defer, what's the process right here on the spot?
There's a motion to postpone indefinitely, that's the current thing that needs to be voted on, and so if you don't agree with that, then you would say against that.
Okay, so we need to do that.
We have to deal with that motion to postpone indefinitely.
Or can we make an amendment to the motion?
Right now, we have to deal with the motion to postpone indefinitely because it's on the floor. If it's withdrawn, then you can make a motion to amend Councilwoman Fire Robin's motion, which I think probably, Councilwoman Fire Robin, you need to restate that so that we all know what it is, and it still needs a second. But right now, we have to deal with the motion to postpone indefinitely.
And the word indefinitely means unlimited, unspecified. And the word indefinitely means unlimited unspecified period of time. So, we need to vote on that?
That's the motion that's currently before you.
But I could withdraw my motion.
Yes, Council empowers.
Depending on, and I was listening, but Margaret, I didn't hear all of your motion.
My original motion? Tara, I think I made a motion to move forward and Chad would join Mayor Hartley with being the liaison. I think that's what it was, is that we're called here with what I might have said.
Before we withdraw, and as the second of the motion, I would just like to comment that this idea first, I believe, came out of the mayors of both Tennessee and Virginia, that we were going to come together and have plans and projects.
Well, let me say this. Yeah, okay. It was, yes, part of a speech, yes.
Okay. And from the beginning, I had concerns that I voiced immediately. I think on the surface, it sounds like a really good idea. You know, we're just going to join together. We're going to, you know, talk about what we're going to do over the next 5, 10, 15, 20 years. But my concerns are, first of all, the unknowns. We don't know what kind of costs that we're going to be getting into with these projects. We don't know who the partners are going to be in these projects, and we don't know how these projects are going to be funded. Now, in looking at this, there are some known factors that we have. We do know that we have a comprehensive plan that we need to complete to give us equal footing with Bristol, Virginia, in understanding the breadth and the depth of what it is that we want to do as leaders and both what our citizens wants to do. And without having this information, it's going to put us at a great disadvantage in this visioning process, because we're so far behind the curve at this point, and that really is not in the best interest of our citizens, and that's why that we're elected, is to represent our citizens. And we do know that Bristol, Virginia, unfortunately, is not capable of partnering with us financially. Over the past couple of years, we've talked about replacing the trees on State Street, which are way overdue of being replaced. They're not financially able to do that at this point. We've asked them to partner with us on a branding study. They were not able to do that. We also asked them to partner with us on a baseball facility study, and they were not able to contribute anything on any of those studies. The reasons that we should wait before we jump into this is that, you know, hopefully, by the time our comprehensive study is finished, Bristol, Virginia will be in a better financial position to partner with us on some things. And once we complete the comprehensive study, you know, it's going to show what interest we have, what interests Bristol, Virginia have, and where we overlap, because there's some things that we're interested in that they aren't and vice versa. And then there's going to be some things that we overlap and we can partner in together. And most importantly, I think that the reason to postpone this until we have a better idea of what our citizens want is that it's because it's in their best interest to do so.
I'll just add a couple of things that I think it's important to realize, and I think I've said it before, that in visioning, it's not all projects. And also, so, and it's all not necessarily city-driven for what comes out of it. And it's, personally, I feel like I'm elected to give citizens input and opportunities to engage as much as I am elected to represent citizens, and that a study, that a visioning process, which again, if it's community-driven, it doesn't belong just to us or necessarily to us. But I would challenge also that because some things are unknown at this point going forward and some of our projects from the past, et cetera, that a visioning can actually help to imagine and to look at different ways that we might carry on in the future that might not be in our brains or our Bristol, Virginia City Council brains, that there may be some opportunities that our citizens bring forward. We like to think that we encourage entrepreneurialism and creativity in our community, and to me, that's exactly what visioning does, is it allows for that. And I think it's a different process than the comprehensive plan. So, I do feel like it is an opportunity and that we should support it and that the timing is good.
Is there some reason why the urgency? I mean, I know that we're in a good place right now, but there seems to be just such a sense of urgency right now, when, you know, you talk about community involvement. This is huge community involvement, and there is a lot of visioning in this, and there is a lot of dreaming in this, because if you know, when you read through this, you saw the Moore Street extension and exactly how, you know, what their hope was there with that in particular. You could go through and see the Parks and Rec. You can go through and you can see economic development. It addresses education on every page of this plan. There's imagination. There's dreaming. There's all of that. I am just dumbstruck at the sense of urgency at the moment, when all that I'm asking for is what our sister has been afforded, and that's an opportunity to do an outstanding job with our comprehensive plan that we have never done before, and that we have committed $102,000, and it was voted on unanimously.
I think, I think part of that, for me, is that visioning would finish up prior to the comprehensive plan, and then those elements can easily be taken into consideration as those final conclusions and recommendations are made from the comprehensive plan. I know we've got Parks and Rec comprehensive, we've got zoning comprehensive, and those will get a little bit of an update as we put those into...
This starts August 6th, I mean, April 6th. So, the whole visioning aspect that you're speaking of starts at about the same time.
Sure.
Beth, I appreciate your leadership and the chamber stepping up to do this. It's not always that we've had leadership to chamber that would take a community visioning process like this, and it will be a lot of work for the chamber. And I appreciate the fact that you'll be, that the chamber will be facilitating this whenever it does start. So, I'm going to move this along. I think we have a motion on the floor and a second. So, to keep us legal...
The motion that's currently on the floor is the motion to postpone indefinitely, and that has been seconded.
And I will remind you, the definition of indefinitely is an unlimited amount of time.
And to clarify, it's to postpone indefinitely the visioning process?
To postpone indefinitely the commitment to the visioning process, until we have an opportunity to, for staff to even look at the parallels that would be involved, for us to get the comprehensive plan well underway and know where we're going with there. I would ask that we postpone for at least 12 to 18 months. And in the grand scheme of things, when you're talking 10 to 20 years, I don't think that 10 to 12 months would be overwhelming. Again, let me be clear. I am all for visioning. I'm all for it. Biggest cheerleader, once we have the comprehensive plan completed, that we have made $102,000 commitment to, and that we've waited a lifetime to have put in place.
Comprehensive plan takes about two to three years, Bill. Is that correct?
I figured probably two years, maybe two and a half.
Two and a half years, so 24 to 30 months. So, if you wanted to wait until the end of the comprehensive plan, it'd be 24 to 30 months, two to two and a half years.
I said, I would think that we could wait at least 12 to 18 months and revisit it at that time.
Well, 12 to 18 months, you're in the middle of the comprehensive...
And to revisit.
And with the comprehensive plan lasting two to two and a half years, wouldn't it be more appropriate to start now? And so, the divisioning plan, if needed, would have information that could be used within a comprehensive, which is exactly what was related to in this study right here from the city of...
The example in Pleasanton.
Yes, from Pleasanton, which is where they used a visionary study in the comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan's kickoff is April 6th. This is what we voted on first. This was what was in our goals and objectives first.
So, would you like to keep your motion the same as it is, and would you like to keep your second the same?
I would just like to say that I think it's fine and grand to talk about ideas. At this point, if we were to put a community together with citizens, there's going to be a lot of excitement, there's going to be a lot of ideas, and the common sense bottom line is that any project is going to cost money. And at this time, Bristol, Virginia is not in a position to come to the table with finances. At some point, hopefully in the future, when they are made whole financially, I think it would be a good time for us to partner together with ideas, with everybody financially whole, so that we can move forward. But without the proper funding, the ideas and the enthusiasm and the excitement will die on the vine. This is too premature to start.
Let me mention one thing real quick, Michelle. The part of the funding, and one of the reasons for bringing this...
A grant is what, maybe $5,000? That will go absolutely nowhere. That's, when we're looking at 15 to 20 years out, that's a lot of stuff, and that money will go nowhere. We have to have both cities prepared. And if it's community-driven, then, you know, probably it doesn't need to be funded by us. If it's, you know, who's going to partner that? If we have people that want to step up in the community to pay for these things, that's a whole different story. But right now, we, we don't have, we're uneven. Bristol, Virginia is not able to come to the table to finance anything. And it really, I mean, it's, if your house is on fire, you don't need to be setting up a block party. You need to get your financial house in order before you start to take on things like this. If you're in financial distress, you need to figure out how to get out of financial distress before you join forces with someone in making financial commitments, and I think it's just premature for us to have that partnership right now.
Beth, you were going to say something?
Thank you, Mayor Keane. I think there's two different funding issues that we're talking about. I don't know if they're getting crossed over or not. The funding issue for the facilitation, for the process itself, is what the USDA grant would fund, and that would pay for a facilitator, it would pay for just any miscellaneous cost if you had refreshments at some of the forums, things like that, and then a finished product, whether that be a document, a presentation, an illustration, or a combination of those. So, I think that's one funding piece. The other piece that I heard, that I hear you on, Michelle, that I'm, that I think is different, is looking at the two cities and their financial condition at present or even maybe in five years. When you do this process, I think you do things that maybe would be appealing jointly, but I think there will be things that come out of this that are specific to each different city as well. So, and I think, Lou, you said it the best in our work session, it's a Venn diagram, and you're going to have where that cross is, that section in the center where the two circles cross is where you'll have things that will be jointly appropriate and appealing to both communities. And then I think you'll have other things that will be out there that will be more specific maybe to one than the other. And that funding, I think, is dependent on what the cities have to contribute to that. There may be things that don't cost a ton of money. We don't really know until we do this, is my point. So, I hear what you're saying completely.
So, I mean, you'd put stipulations on it, that we would only talk about 15, 20 years out, things that aren't going to cost money? I mean, I can't really think of, I can't imagine that you get a roomful of people together excited about ideas and then not have a dollar amount on it and not a good time.
An outcome of the Nature Center visioning process that we had close to 20 years ago was Friends of Steel Creek Nature Center group. So, that cost the city nothing. In fact, it's raised money for the city, but that was an outcome that didn't cost anything. An outcome of the Ignite was a youth networking alliance. We started in 1999 with all the organizations and some of the churches, et cetera, that work with children and youth, and that, it didn't cost anything, and that has continued.
But there's no reason to put together a joint committee to do things like that at this point. I mean...
Well, really, we're kind of taking the council out. It suggested that we take the council out of this, in essence. And so, this is being led by our community, by our chamber, and facilitated by our Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce has asked for someone on the city council to serve on this. So, the city council will be abreast. I would like to see the city council have input and suggestions as to who may serve, you know, on the steering committee. But it's really taking it out of our hands and putting it in the hands of the chamber and the community.
Well, it came from the mayor, who asked the chamber to do it, and the cities fund the chamber, so...
That came out of a discussion from among us. We all talked about that.
Yes, and I talked to Beth about it, and my position at that point in time was that it would be totally, it was totally the chamber, that we were not, you know, unless we volunteered to serve in some capacity, but that it was not the two mayors and the steering committee as such, that it would truly be non-governmental and non-municipal in its structure, even the steering committee, because if it is important to the population, if it's important, you know, a lot of the funding would need to come out of the private sector. You know, we've had conversations recently about bond ratings and how important our bond ratings are, and we do have a level of bonded indebtedness, and we have a revenue stream for that, but should anything happen to that revenue stream, you know, should there be a drawback? I know you called me an alarmist one time, saying that, oh, you know, but it's true. You know, we live in a very precarious place, and so, how obligated are we, you know, to anything beyond where we are right now? I think it would have to come from the private sector.
So, let me ask you, would it be your liking that this be completely community-driven by the Chamber of Commerce?
If the chamber wants to pick this up and do something on their own, I don't have a vote in that, do I? I don't. I mean, if the chamber wants to pick this up and run it completely on their own, secure all the funding, organize it as a true community entity, then...
Which is what I want. I want this to be community-driven. I've always asked for that.
And I had, I had mentioned that too, but realizing then that our staff would not be brought on, you know, that our staff would devote their efforts to the comprehensive plan, that it's truly community-driven. Now, here's the problem with that, is that, and I think we've just lost such sight. We spent four days last year about this time of year, four full days, working with a facilitator out of Knoxville, and this, this was one of the biggest things that came out of that as our goals and objectives, and we all said how important this would be. And have you all read this? Have you all had an opportunity to read this?
I have reviewed it. I haven't read it.
Okay. The information in this would make what you're talking about even better, and that's my point. I'm all about quality control. I'm all about quality outcomes. We have a disparaged situation at the moment, because the information in here is absolutely tremendous. And not only is the information in here tremendous, the process that the community of Bristol, Virginia got to go through to, for self-realization as to the community that they live in, you know, is an advantage. they live in, you know, is an advantage. They know their community. They really do, because they've worked through the process. That's my point. And, and I still haven't heard an answer as to why it couldn't be tabled for 18 to 24 months.
I think Jack addressed it, and I think it's philosophical whether you do it before and visioning adds to it, or, or the plan comes and adds to visioning. I think it's, that either way has pluses. But it sounds like, so if I withdrew my motion, would you withdraw your motion? And then Beth, community-driven, and I would state that I am in complete support and hope that a great process moves forward, et cetera, if that's possible. I don't know, the USDA grant, if that needs to be applied for by the cities?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if Mr. Sora knows that or not.
I suspect that it does. In my conversation with Bristol, Virginia city managers, it would be a joint application.
I think it is to the locality, not to, I don't think we would qualify-
But we wouldn't necessarily have to have city council representation on a steering committee to get that grant. I would-
I don't know the answer to, that may be something that Mr. Sora and Ms. Crowder would have to-
We will look into that. I think from, certainly from a financial standpoint, we would be accountable for the disbursement of funds, of grant proceeds. So we would have to manage that, that aspect of it, certainly. Beyond that, I, I, I really don't know.
So, Ken-
Go ahead, Dan.
On the technicals of that, if there is something, well, I guess we need to, we need to go ahead and take care of this vote, but if, if this is able to carry forward, if that is something that would even need to come to us as a resolution to say we acknowledge this, if the, if the amount hits the threshold that would warrant it, I guess that's a technical that you could just follow up with us?
Yeah, I think, I think probably both councils would have to accept the grant application, as we normally do.
When City Manager Broughton put into place the strategic plan with the community partners, I guess that, as much as anything, and, and to have the visioning process community-wide, but that, you know, it would be in partnership with our community partners throughout, which would really be a deeper dive into the community, which would then be completely, two completely different type of projects. This is municipal comprehensive plan and the workings of the city. The visioning then would be completely private sector, volunteer-driven. And I go back to the point, if it's important to the community, the community will participate. And so I just think that this has to take our priority, part of our goals and objectives. We invested a lot of time trying to determine that. And this conversation that we've had tonight was the conversation that we should have had last July, before there was any announcement. Because we could have worked through this without cameras and eight months of speculation.
Let me just say, I think we've got some common ground. You know, so I hear everybody saying that this, this should move forward sometime or another. And I hear that, that you, that we all want this to be community-driven. And I've heard it mentioned also, that the council should stay out of this. And I think it should be community-driven, and I think it should move at the timing that the chamber, who is going to facilitate this, and the community thinks it needs to move forward. So if you're willing to withdraw your motion, and you're willing to withdraw your motion, I think we should give the support to our Chamber of Commerce to move forward, and let the community move forward with this at their timing, rather than anyone else's timing. Now, do we have common ground? Is that what everybody has said?
I don't think we need to take any action, then, if that's the case.
Exactly.
Because then, the chamber, it would be on the chamber to then pick it up and go.
Exactly.
And I think that it would be important for it to truly be community-driven, as it has been in the past, without a quasi-steering committee made up of members of city council in any capacity, mayors or not, because our leadership changes.
Well, I think we should let the chamber decide on who they want on the, on their steering committee. And I'm, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of involvement in many different areas. I'm sure that probably, you're a community member that I'm sure would want to, to serve in certain capacities, and, and would be very effective in certain capacities. So I think we're citizens of Bristol, Tennessee, so if, 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 and I think that our city would also support, any way we possibly can, a community vision, community-led visioning. I think we've got common ground here. There's no, there's no need for a motion of any type, move forward as, as the chamber feels necessary, and, and, and completely make it a community-driven process.
Danielle, are our waters clear doing that?
Yes, I think if you're, you would need to withdraw your motion first, and then-
I have a question. Would we actually need a different proposal from the chamber as to what we already have, then?
We don't get a proposal.
We wouldn't have any say in anything.
For our interests, but we don't have to approve anything.
We could ask, you know, for updates periodically.
I just have one question, and it's the question I've asked repeatedly. If we wanted to partner and to provide the grant funding and this, that, and the other, what is the problem with what, because it doesn't discount the fact that Bristol, Virginia has completed their comprehensive plan? And I get the whole egg or chicken thing, I get that. But what is detrimental about waiting 18 months so that our staff could participate? And so that it could be similar to something that we've done in the past? Because for anything to really be implemented unless it go, unless it's privately driven or totally community-driven, at some point, I think we're kidding ourselves to think that it would never come back to us. And I just, I just, I would like for somebody to tell me what eight difference, huge difference, impactful difference 18 months would make.
I would say leadership in a position for somebody willing to step up and do it. Because our past leadership, in, in some cases, would not take on a project like this. Our chamber is willing to do that, they're primed, they're ready to go with it. You know, I think, again, I will state, this needs to be timed with what the chamber sees and the community sees. So if the chamber decides that this is not the right time, that's fine. And you move forward when you think the right time is to move forward. Any, any comments to that?
I would just, a couple of things. One is that I have a wonderful working relationship with my board of directors, and anything that we decide on that's of this magnitude, I certainly want their buy-in and their, their advice and their support in doing something like that. I would never jeopardize that relationship that I've worked very hard to, to develop. We have a fantastic board. The other piece is, of course, the funding is an issue. That was part of the equation when we started the conversation, was the USDA rural grant, or city funding, or combination of a number of different things. So that will certainly play into the decision on how this moves forward as well. And I just, I personally feel like if this moves forward, I think it needs to have a very enthusiastic council on both sides of town, saying, this is a great idea, this will be good for our community, it will take us where we need to go. So I think a combination of all those things have to play out in the final decision, if that makes sense, so.
And really, I think that at this time, I don't think it is the right time to move forward with this plan.
So, Bill, can I ask you?
Yes, sir.
As far as the, the grant that Beth is speaking of, not a lot of time involved in doing something like that. If, if our city staff needs to participate?
I don't think it would be a large hurdle to put together, and we'd do this jointly with Bristol, Virginia, to put together the grant application, and then to be a man, it didn't be a part, just a project of one finance department or the other, to manage the disbursement of the funds, assuming that, that they couldn't be directed toward the chamber, that they would need to go to a government entity. And that's an assumption on my part at this point.
Mm-hmm. I think we found common ground, and so we would like to have, you know, reports in the future. So my understanding is that we're withdrawing the motion, and the second, withdrawing your motion in the second, and we are, in essence-
No.
Okay, you want to keep the motion?
I, well, I just think that-
Well, listen, we have a motion. We know what your motion was. You want to proceed with that. You have a second on the motion. I think we should go, can we, do we want to go and vote on that motion? Is that right?
Someone call for the question, and then we vote on next.
I just want to go on the record as saying, to be very clear, I was elected by, we were all, Margaret, I agree, we were all elected by the people of Bristol, Tennessee. This works within our scope of our goals and objectives that we agreed upon. I am all for visioning with the community sector. I believe that this does this for Bristol, Tennessee, which we haven't had the opportunity to do. When all of this was announced, and, you know, the way that this all came about was not through our normal process. And it was announced publicly, and then we were expected to react to it. I sat there and had no idea that this was even going to be proposed. I don't know, maybe other members were in confidence and did, but I was not privy to any com, any idea that this was coming. And it's outside of our scope. I feel like we, as a council, have been put in a disingenuous place in trying to work through this, when we're trying to, I'm trying to advocate for the people of Bristol, Tennessee. And I am advocating that we work through our process on something that we voted unanimously for. And I still contend that we, we could work together beautifully, the two cities, with a comprehensive, if we both had a comprehensive plan. Because I, I think it's important for it to be community-driven. I also think that, you know, I know we all have, I've worked very hard the past three years to, to demonstrate that we can work together. But I think we have to take care of our own housekeeping first. And I get that, you know, there's the perception that we have common ground, pass it to the chamber. But I agree with what you've said, Beth, and I think that, that you've spoken from the heart, is that the way that this will be absolutely most successful is if we have absolute buy-in from both councils. And there's the agreement that we would prob, we would have absolute buy-in from both councils in 18 to 24 months. So to, to pass this off now is to, you know, is to be willing to, to hand it off without our comprehensive plan, which I think is disadvantageous to the people of Bristol, Tennessee.
Okay, we're going in circles. So-
If there's, if the motion is not withdrawn, I'll call for the, since the motion is not withdrawn, I'll call for the question.
Thank you. Now we vote on the motion to postpone indefinitely.
Okay. And I will remind us that indefinitely is an unlimited amount of time, so. Tara, I think we're ready for the, and we're, a yes vote is to a vote to postpone indefinitely. A no vote is to negate that. No, that would be no to that.
Bearing in mind that indefinitely could and has been termed as 18 to 24 months.
Well, would you like to change your motion to that?
Well, inde, I've said it 100 times. I mean, I said-
Well, let's change the motion.
18 to 24 months, to postpone for 18 to 24 months, so that we have the opportunity to complete our comprehensive plan.
Okay, so the motion is to, is to put-
We need it, but if the motion is amended, does a second or agree?
Do you agree, Michelle?
I agree.
Okay. Now we have a first, we have a second. Do you want to call for the-
Call for the question.
Call for the question.
Do we want to repeat it, so?
Let's restate, please.
Restate it.
The motion is to postpone for 18 to 24 months, so that it allows Bristol, Tennessee, the same opportunity that Bristol, Virginia has experienced in compiling its first-ever comprehensive plan, that was agreed upon unanimously by this council.
Okay, you got that. Call for the question? Okay, ready for real call?
House Mayor Yen?
No.
Captain Lindgren?
Yes.
Captain Aron?
No.
Mayor Keane?
No.
Captain Powell?
Yes.
So the motion does not go forward?
Well, the motion to postpone indefinitely did not go forward.
Yes.
Means we're back to Councilor Fire Robbins' motion.
The motion with no second.
Which I did not have a second yet, so.
So, and I'll withdraw my motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
To?
I'd like to make a motion.
Well, Margaret needs to withdraw hers.
I did, I just did.
Okay. To allow this process to move forward by the chamber facilitating it at the time period that you guys want to do that. I don't even think I need to make a motion for that.
You don't need to make a motion for that.
We don't need to make a motion for that. I hope that's what will happen. I'll withdraw that motion, I'll just say, I hope that's what happens. But do it on the time that you think it's best. It can be 18 months out. It may be best to wait 18 or 24 months out. Talk with your board, see what she thoughts are, see what their thoughts are, and we can move forward in some way or fashion. But I'm just glad we have some kind of resolution that we're not holding you up from doing anything. And I think that's the main, main crust of this conversation, is to make sure that we're not holding you up.
It, it might be good to define the process a little bit, because I think we've talked all, what I have a concept of and what somebody else has a concept of may be different. And I think we have done our community-wide visioning, which was one model, and then Jeff Broughton's economic was a completely different kind of process. So I think it's, what we have in our minds might be different. So it could be helpful for us to understand what is community-wide visioning, what does that mean to us here, and to kind of look at what, what the options are along those lines.
It really are.
Well, that would really fall to the chamber, then.
That's what I, I'm talking to Beth and saying that could be helpful for everybody to-
And our strategic, our strategic planning, which was done in 2006, if I'm not mistaken, updated in 2012, is that correct? Strategic planning was very similar to, to a comprehensive plan. I'm sure there are aspects of it that are different, but we have, as a city, gone through a similar process, through the planning that we have done.
This was a strategic economic development partnership plan that was done in, done in 2012. It's, it's, it is different from a comprehensive plan. This was more focused on, on economic development from a tactical standpoint, a, a window of four to six years.
Do we have any further comments by council members? Okay, we are adjourned. Okay, we are adjourned.